...the regular session of the Cape Charles Planning Commission, opening the public hearings. I call order the Cape Charles Town Council to adjourn session of the Planning Commission to a long-term public hearing.
Town Council.
Brian.
Sullivan.
Mark Holmes. Yep, okay, good, thank you very much, we are here, we have power. Planning Commission, roll call please.
Keith Costin.
Alex.
Bert. McCoy.
Drew.
Graham.
Mark Holmes. Is that my second? Yeah, could it be, okay. First item on the agenda is the tax map parcel 8383-11-2, application for zoning amendment from the Harbor District to Industrial District M2. Do you want to read the other question, please?
The Cape Charles Planning Commission Town Council will hold joint public hearings on Monday, August 15th, 2016, at 6:00 PM with Cape Charles Civic Center and 500 Tasewell Avenue to receive comments following. One, a request for zoning amendment to these seven parcels, 8383-11-2, from Harbor District to Industrial District M2. Two, a conditional use permit application for the following proposed conditional uses at parcel 8383-11-2, marine port facility, boatyard, bulk storage, transfer facility. The following uses are permitted in the M2 District by conditional use. Cape Charles zoning ordinance, Article 3, Section 3.13, dot sheet, dot 7, dash, through 10, 13, and 23. Seven, concrete plant manufacturing, sales, and distribution of concrete and related products. Eight, railroad tracks, sightings, yards, or roundhouses. Nine, marinas, docks, and wharves if contiguous to the Cape Charles Harbor. Ten, port facilities, marine rail trucking and/or intermodal terminals, including transfers, storage, handling, inspection, processing, and/or transport of containerized bulk and/or other cargo. Thirteen, outdoor storage provided it shall be surrounded by wax myrtle or red-tipped botinia, installed on four-foot centers and by evergreen trees with a minimum caliper of 2.5 inches on 15-foot centers except for entrances and exits. Twenty-three, structures other than buildings exceeding 50 feet. The Planning Commission will hold their regular monthly meeting to vote on recommendations the Town Council for both applications immediately following the public hearings. Information on the conditional use permit application can be viewed online at www.kaycharles.org under agendas in the Planner's Office at 2 Palm Street or obtained by phone at 757-331-3259, extension 15, or email to planner@kaycharles.org.
Wait, anybody sign up for the public hearing?
Nobody signed up.
Do we close the public hearing, I guess, just to see if somebody signed up?
We recognize the applicant. He's seen a good act for our department, he's been way out. The Chair is on the Planning Commission tonight for Mary Forer, to accommodate us, we're here enough tonight for all. And that will help in the end, if we have consistency with that. It's what we're trying to do here, we're both here to ask you tonight for the rezoning. Different on the table, we had a condition use permit listed there, they're going to start handing gloves for us. Contract first, so we're part of our due diligence, so we both get the rezoning and the condition use permit. Live rock, project. If you will indulge us tonight, I know very short powerful presentation there.
You have two minutes and 20 seconds, sir.
I was at my own bar, so I have to say that, now, who else here? Tim Gunn, Airball, and Tim Brown, all of our projects, I'll just lay that there and see if we close the public hearing. Any questions, just you guys.
Right, man, you have the gentleman, Ralph, come look him up also with three minutes of peace.
I want to be taken three minutes, man. Thank you. My example, this is an opportunity to present the project tonight, we'll go through it quickly. Staffs, review of the project is right on the mark, very clear, and the uses, the reason we're here today, so we'll...
Can you speak into the microphone, please? They can't hear you back. We can turn, hit the left hand, or the right, excuse me, one on the right, should have been.
So the potential uses, or the proposed uses on the property are for port facilities. This site, which is directly from the zoning ordinance, marine rails, rail trucking, intermodal terminals. The idea is this is an investment in a port facility to be able to accommodate the goods and services that may come in through that port facility on half of the property, or a portion of the property. The other portion of the property would be used as a boatyard for care maintenance, for ride type vessels. They currently have some potential agreements in place for servicing commercial fishing vessels, and also anticipating the service of many yards on the facility. Right now, the current Harbor District zoning allows for marine-related uses, typically, you know, customarily associated with a marina facility, however, does not allow specifically for port facilities. So that's the reason we're here today. Statement of intent, staff report goes through these. We believe the request for zoning to the M2 District is consistent with the goals and intent of the above this district. And interestingly, as Bert mentioned, the industrial activities are by right under M2. Really, that's a loose interpretation of industrial activities, the uses you see up there really don't involve any industrial activities, and as a result, we'll need a conditional use permit to implement those requirements.
Let me stop you there, because you're running out of time. Do you have the people who want to give their three minutes to you, so you can continue rolling, I mean, two more, all right, go for it.
Okay, um, thank you. This is the zoning, this is the official zoning map, it's down to Cape Charles. And zoning a little more closely, I'm parsing the question in yellow. You can see the surrounding uses, Harbor District, industrial to west, Harbor District, general business, like industrial on the other side, some commercial, general life business on the others. The applicant certainly has interests in several of the properties that are up there, and it's our intent to provide a smooth transition between some of the Harbor uses that are in place and the planned for Harbor District parcels, to re-screening as much as possible to help with that compatibility, but also take advantage of is there value to these waterfront, waterfront property. So the site plan, again conceptual site plan, shows the, uh, shows the bulk storage facility to, on the left-hand side of the property. Improved port terminal on the water side. See the water feature in the middle, that's an existing pond, that's on the site, and EMPs would be added on either side of that pond, but the intent would be to use that what has now become a naturalized feature as part of this form of artificial planning for the property. The green space that you see around the property is existing woods, it would be left screening around the facility where possible, where that screening does not exist, and the opportunities there given the proposed uses. The idea would be to add the screenings in place to create as much buffer around the property, both for sound and, and visual as possible. Again, keeping in mind that we want this facility to be compatible with the adjacent use. And just shows some imagery that was created, was created for how the facility might look upon full build-out. This is just a series of images to show the primary infrastructure and the condition of the site afterwards. Very serious, right?
Questions from council? I'm sorry, have you finished? Questions from council?
I'd love to think you agree this, please, me.
Anything else, by commission?
Is that on title, something?
No.
Just surface water or something?
Just surface water.
But, so it's not tied into anything?
No, historically, there may have been a culvert that drained to the harbor. There probably still was some sewage there, but culvert's not evident now, appears to have collapsed over the years.
Good, so, well, that's, that's fine.
And as part of the site plan, we would propose to retrofit that, so it may serve as part of this form of management.
I have one minor correction on page, I think it's 11. List of adjacent property owners is a title. They have the town of Cape Charles as the owner, the mailing address is V Box 395 Eastville. That is incorrect, the town of Cape Charles mailing address is in...
It's in Cape Charles?
Yes, yes.
That's two of them.
I think, I think I read it, but, uh, recently sold. Late company, just 395, right, I'm not seeing my, I'm like, current, uh, site.
Somebody, somebody's been crowding on it.
Somebody should be, he's talking, something about it, didn't he? Sound good.
I saw another book, it's in, at least on my copy, it didn't appear that, you know, conditional use permit was signed. It is signed. It is signed. Yes, Mr. Brown, it's in my office, it's in my office. Digital copy, that was emailed, one that happened. Any other questions? Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I make a motion to close, what's that here?
All in favor?
Aye.
Council? Do you have a motion to close the public hearing?
Certainly.
For second? Second. All in favor, close the public hearing? All right.
Aye.
We are closed, and we made motion to adjourn the Town Council. I'll be going to adjourn the next one. Go to the next one, okay. Item P under public hearings, tax map parcel 8383-11-2, conditional use permit for variety of port and industrial uses. Have you typed it, will you?
I haven't, it's seen, I haven't...
Okay, right. Any comments from either the applicant? Would you have an argument?
I think you have, have anything to add, consider your answer, yeah.
Any, any more questions, from either council or my commission? Do I have a motion to close the second public hearing?
Second.
Second? All in favor? Any close? Do you have a motion to close the public hearing, the second public hearing?
Seven.
For second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Are they closed? Second public hearing is closed, the Town Council. Thank you, sir. Welcome here, now, going to adjourn, we need you to, to... Our motion, yes. Any motion to adjourn, please, to the Town Council?
I'll second.
All in favor, adjourned?
Aye.
Any close? We are adjourned, thank you all very much. May I stand now for a moment, silence? National Agents.
Goodbye, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have anybody who's in the public booth? Thanks, everyone. Thanks, Chris.
Sorry, remind that I read here on page two, row number X. Too many vendors using the parking space, the long, they have to, they could create an issue.
I think it's missing the word parking.
Right.
Yeah, that's, so that's, you're missing the word parking from each location.
H2C.
H2C.
Number X.
Basically, they should say, too many vendors use, that is, whatever, yeah. Oh, okay. With inadequate spaces for each location, correct?
Oh, you went, you're, you're ready.
I'm not trying to make it more than this. Correct, did I make the correction? Any other, um, issues, Mike? Do I have a motion to accept the comments, the amendment? Second. Second. All in favor? Aye. Any close? So, carry on. Refuse. Sir?
The Chair, um, the only thing that I wanted to bring your attention to, from the Stanford Port this month, pertains to the Harbor Drift project, which is ongoing, has no doubt seen the pipe continues to be at a couple sites. So, the most recent part lunch, the organ, it says, a week to two weeks before we see that pipe move to beach. That would, uh, should be about six days for the sand to become on the beach. And screening the fencing to occur, I don't think after that, we just... So that's it, as far as the Stanford, um, currently. The one thing I've, just to take back to last month, something to bring to your attention, just by the way of attention, not just for already though, is developing Cape Charles from the six-month annual report. We've only had two, I'm sorry, we've had three single-family homes approved in the first six months, and now that's actually the first seven and a half months. That's a little slow. One more is scheduled away in a soon family development, it's perfect, we will tomorrow. So, don't get hard to be trouble, why don't you go to visit, the government of new homes, there's a lot of new, as far as the renovation of old homes is concerned. Jett raises building official requests every month, so, if you want to see, okay. A, a perhaps more accurate description of development, take a look at here, is building permits reports, because that'll show you all the renovations that were done. The new construction is basically set, but nothing to worry.
Is that, is that all, do you have a wish?
No, that's, that's two homes that they create in one, in one store.
Questions, sir?
Yes.
Number four. I was sort of getting a question with the Harbor, it would be, I don't know, the business. As I talked to Ralph, just before this meeting.
That, that was the last meeting, that was the last one.
Okay, got it, okay. No, 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 no.
It's a meeting for our, oh, no, no, for...
All our third Mondays have been sort of ratcheting the calendar.
Yeah, I know, I know.
I was still in July.
No, no.
Could we, we tend to in periodic counts of density on, on the bay there during summer?
Yes, 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 just like we're trying to make this on that, we're seeing a lot more golf carts, and the golf carts are figured out as part perpendicular to curve, which is saying a lot of space, but, an actual, can you install, or just sort of work again, the provision of people have figured out to not take up a lot of space on the bay.
Any more questions on reports before we move on to the whole business? Next map parcel 8383-11-2, application zoning amendment. Comments? Questions? Motion? Do I have a...
I'll make a motion, if you can make, remember, the amendment is a question.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any close? So, carry on. Tax map parcel 8383-11-2, additional use permit application for variety of port industrial uses. Questions, concerns, somebody want to, any motion?
Let me just ask one question. It talks about a concrete plant, plant is a part of it. It, will it work in any way at all with bayshore concrete, or is it going to be two independent, this is a lab of it, a smaller scale plant to make the concrete for places that are shown, concrete, and if so, then will it, will it cease to function once the construction, like, a little bit more about what that concrete plant is going to do, if I could ask, this is the explanation here.
There really is no existing plan to have a concrete plant there. We took the language that was in the zoning ordinance under port facilities, that happened to be one of those uses. And again, you know, just in the interest of not trying to limit potential opportunities to come up, we wanted to keep that, keep that specificity, you know, in the, in the approval. But there's no current plan to do any kind of concrete activity, and certainly not to partner with facial rock.
Thank you, that, that, that... Somebody want to make a motion?
I thought, I thought that I saw something in here on this additional use permit, that the, the wording severely limited the usage there. Now, maybe, maybe I misunderstood, I think it was in Larry's court. I can't flash it. How to do with that? Oh, that service equipment and stuff like that?
Uh, yeah. Commissioner Burke, what can I, maybe, on middle of page two, the additional development requirements, section 3.13, F, of the zoning ordinance. Regardless of the use, this is a little page two, in that Stanford, this, this is currently in zoning ordinance. It's a number of restrictions on things like outside assembly, storage of parts and materials, no loudspeakers, silent耳塞, no dust, smoke, and aerosolers, et cetera, there are nine items listed there, that's what every development has to comply with, with all of those permanent use or condition use. So those are all going to be further, as they say, development requirements when the site, when the application for building site on this.
But don't, won't that interfere with, you know, operations?
Don't, don't let them, don't let them accommodate or seek, uh, within the zoning areas.
Right, right. Okay.
And they, we tried to kind of take it, they have to, uh...
Oh, they're, okay.
And then the zoning ordinance, it means the restrictions on the law. So we're all...
What I'm bringing up, is, is, is gentlemen, it's... I got a question along about that particular point. That, that language seems to be directly contradicts language in the conditional use from the, particularly 13, and arguably 10. Yeah, well, not nine also.
With the screening, because 13, it does talk about outdoor storage as far as, if, if, I believe, or certain. So, as far as reconciling that with number four, F4, again, it's talking about petroleum, parts, fossil fuels, and petroleum. If that's this type of materials that are being stored, then it doesn't conform to this section of zoning ordinance. But other things, you know, as you've shown gravel, would certainly be not excluded here as long as it's between, which I will in the second page show.
She just want to be sure we weren't misreading, having intention to store, make light gravel with screening, that, that I have four that inhibit us from doing that, this type of turkeys, like, or louds, or conditional use on it, to do that.
Right, and, and four says specifically, parts, materials, fossil fuels, raw materials, petroleum. Gravel, I wouldn't consider gravel any of those. Here's the, the word material, is what I'm saying. Well, raw materials, materials.
No materials, just, just, parts, materials.
Parts, materials. Of course. Gravel, anything is materials. Time, maybe, maybe you can add it.
Any other questions, concerns?
I have a question on number seven. It says, no equipment used outdoors excluding half-time trucks, shall be equipped with any, with or use any device to emit a morning noise or particle signal while use on the property.
I mean, I would think that there would need that, as part of the parts of their operation.
Should be required, if you're...
And that's ocean, and to, I'm like, we had in, Burbank, and there would need to comply with ocean regulations, or something, for, for change. So I think it's pretty good.
And probably a real share. But the world ordinance can't be able to settle all of them. So if any of that, they need a backup, two parts on the trucks, they need a backup, two parts on the trucks, that would settle, I think, not that one.
And what happened? Yeah, I guess so. Question, question, why, why are all the industrial, industrial uses... All right, as long as they have the...
Very good, since I asked the big issue. Yeah, all, all survived, I let you do this.
Yeah, yeah, let's go. All right, can we get a motion out, guys?
I think we should replace initial use.
That's second. All in favor? Aye. Any close? So, carry on, congratulations, gentlemen. And, you know, feel free to keep us honest, because some of this stuff, you can tell, it's kind of a work in progress. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, whole business, the post-grabs, please, section 3.13, we can understand if we submit this to the council and the council actually make a decision. Okay, sure. We're going to access commercial activity in the district. Okay, it's the governor?
Yes, following for discussion in the last one.
Yes, following for discussion of the last one about some limited access to commercial activity in the open space district. Open space district prohibits small commercial activity. And the open space district is the beach and the central park. So what I propose are some time and place restrictions on limited access to commercial activity. And as I say there, that it's refreshment and beach use related, not motorized for a particular time of year, May first, November September, Thursday through Sunday, noon through six. And that's also all the spatial requirements, time requirement, oh, sorry, that's all the time requirement. The spatial requirement is limited to the footprint east or landward of the dune, the south of the dune, to the boardwalk, on a coast of a boardwalk, we're working for main clear from the pavilion south to the if it spares any activity seaward of the dune. So strictly speaking, the beach is clear. And it exempts central park from these, given the residential nature of central park, do I exempt central park from the commercial activity?
Um, continues to exempt central park. I'm sorry. Continues to exempt central park from the commercial activity. Don't we understand that that coincides with beer truck assistance and major events?
My understanding is that for fundraising activities.
And that this is called first commercial?
Actually.
Okay, that's fine, that's fair.
I haven't. You have. The May first through September fifteenth, and it says Thursday through Sunday. Well, let's just take this year. We had July fourth online. So they would, that would have said that they could have set up according to what you have.
Correct.
For fourth of July.
Correct. Fourth of July Memorial Day, Labor Day are excluded. Again, scrap language. The idea being that if it's still any access of people who own the beach, who wants to available to some activities and some people who also have the opportunity to go turn the tide of the dune.
Why are we waiting?
They wouldn't be.
Why are you closing off Monday through Sunday?
That's what I'm saying. Because we're going from a zero tolerance to definitely from a zero tolerance to one percent. And that's what I said.
Maybe for sure, 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 you're going to be, but people are down there in vacation.
Or wait until...
The businesses will figure out when, when people are going to be there. It's important for them to be there, and they want to be there.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, that's going to be, the busier we get, the more people are going to show up down at the beach.
I think Monday's a good day, too. I mean, Monday, stay open Monday.
Well, usually the shift is in front of your standard. And on Memorial Day and World Job Day, aren't those, in that space, can come by others? Businesses just coming for that day to sell crafts and food and that.
Okay, fourth of July.
Yeah, fourth of July.
There's a question. But the Monday exclusion would, as true, now, the Monday exclusion would cover Memorial Day and Labor Day. So only for two to three day holidays.
So can we, can we talk anymore about what we were giving there about the gentleman that want to sell rampage chairs and that type of thing? When did we find this, that we're from other news?
Because he wouldn't be a motorized. But again, it's not written to help anyone. But it excludes motorized vehicles because, again, the nature of the sand and the other things. So many times you're very thoughtful.
So that's a person that set up there on the Mexican avenue, wanted to take her motorized vehicle down there, she's, can't...
She's not motorized. No. That means the toad.
So that's good old Vanabish style.
Yeah, if it needs to be towed, that's fine. But it's not motorized and it's not going to bring a mix of, it's kind of a generator. So next, big total generator wasn't issued last year with food truck. Wasn't, that wasn't a food truck, it should have worked fine as a food truck. But it didn't, it didn't kind of make a noise or anything. So the external generators create a lot of problems for the residential folks, but that's not in the, the may.
Larry, you say south to the pier. That's a general description. But like, I see a lot of people that fish on the pier. They park and like take their liquor and fishing equipment and they go somewhere else. So that one area there, it's kind of open, that's still where we're getting them, right?
Yeah, and again, things like coolers aren't the sort of thing that we have rocking on.
No, no, I'm just saying that, but like food trucks or something, or in that area, is that very cool?
The truck would be excluded, but a cart wouldn't, maybe.
Oh, okay.
A cart, whether it's some baseball caps, sunscreen, ice cream.
That's solid.
Right, that winter play day, and that's a relatively small footprint.
Okay.
I was thinking sometimes.
Yeah, because they might have years past.
And again, the reason, and this is just practical for this year. If you've seen where they tend to set up by the bathrooms, that serves as a very nice sort of rest for people to get out of the sun. And I've seen a lot, there's little kids there.
Yeah, right.
That could be a commercial area now, last draft that I've taken that out, again, to give people a break. If you don't want to be exposed to someone selling baseball caps and ice cream, no there.
How about the gazebo, is that all from the stair?
Saddle, yeah, I mean, that's...
Because I've seen people set up brills and stuff.
Yeah, but to have commercial activity in something that has footprints is probably not smart. And that's just because people, again, use it as a walk for a break.
Or, or place to take a rest.
Yeah.
But they do put girls in there, right?
Yeah.
Well, I think that's kind of dangerous.
Well, not the least of parking issues.
Nothing to say to it.
I don't think that's... I'd like to express a concern about litter. You know, a few years ago, people from Clearwater, Florida said they thought our beach was nice with the Clearwater. I've been to Clearwater and I was impressed if they would say that. But it might have had something to do with having clean beaches, too. And, you know, can almost say that, you know, Cape Charles is a litter, litter free town. And a couple of weeks ago, a couple of blocks away, I saw a plastic bag lying. I raced down, got down, went to try catching a blue body, and before I could get to it, a fellow on a bicycle came by and just scooped it up with his... Excuse me. My gesticulation. But anyway, when I saw what happened, I said, thanks a lot. He said, no problem. Like, and I think everybody kind of makes it their business to keep, keep it litter free. You know, I have a daughter on Flatbush Avenue in Brooklyn, and I can tell you, it is a blessing to be able to say that. And I just hope that if, if some of that stuff is generated, then the attitude that counts equals what was, of course, the town. That the people are paid to clean it up, starts to change, and get a little careless, that whole privilege that we now enjoy could be compromised. So that's just a concern throughout, you know.
Other person, this woman in Texas, this person.
Yeah, but, but they're very understaffed and right now, they get a lot of help from the town, but just sort of go around it. And now they pick our up and do it themselves, quite happy to do it because there's so little, well, we speak of that.
It's so odd.
I could see a scenario where there's literal...
Do they do care?
It's in the park. I see it in the park, pick up stuff in the market.
Yeah, those are the easiest with trucks.
Well, look, we're not going to know. It's a plan, man. See what happens.
So they have to get a permit?
Permit, building like a business license. So that the area is not overrun. What I propose is that the business license for activity on the beach or on the open space district, if this happens, it goes to the limited. It opens up for a certain, on a certain day, closes whatever trip or things appropriate. Fifteen, thirty days later, it gives your opportunity to collect your business license for, to operate on the open space district, it gives your opportunity.
Any idea of... Because one of, one of New York's...
I know. I can't run anybody with the...
I think we charge for tall ships that we charge for the dune. For the permit.
That's an effect for the...
Okay, well, I was just...
I don't see it.
Seasonal.
Well, what I'm looking at is just a, this is a group of people who are not making money on their own. So we can keep it to something reasonable.
And that permit would only allow them for these days of the week.
It would, it would permit them for whatever the language is of the, of the ordinance. So...
Is this from the beach?
Toward the dune, eastward to the boardwalk, so behind is the land side of the dune.
Oh, land side.
And then going to go south to the, to the pier.
And then...
Yes, you were, you were, you were siding.
You know, the kiosk and the little picnic table there anyway.
But will we deliver to X amount? I mean, we could have many people.
The only, the only thing that we're, and I'm happy to do research and bring this back if you're interested, is to just do a square footage requirement as well. You could only have X amount of footprint. Because you couldn't imagine someone who's got a, I mean, you can imagine it happening in some of a relatively small car operation, but they set up an enormous tent around them. And take that probably twice as much square footage with their, with their tent than they do with their actual car. I know when people pass them out in the evening, they like this either. So some measure of tending umbrellas seems to make sense. But that does always, all that shade goes into the footprint as well.
And will they have to have a valid permit?
Yes, there's some food, there's some baseball.
Well, how do you, it don't have to be like a... So if I can, if someone wants to do, say, something, say, the kiosk down there, it's going to kind of hurt them a little bit. So I want to be smaller, because that's a big, a big idea.
Yeah.
So, you know, what you're saying previously, it should be fine next, maybe we should have a couple tiers or something like that.
What, what, we talked about, of course, the one where it needs chairs and umbrellas and stuff like that. But he wants to test out a storage thing down there, where would he put that?
He put that on the beach, I think, put that in that area. Because one's a motor, so if it's a cart or if it's just a, if it's just a rock box, you can fill it up and they, you know, a hundred flights in every morning, that's fine.
I think kayak people would need access to the beach for their...
Yeah, but they would use the two little... So there's all those brackets that they, that's what they do.
They put them on the gold with the brackets now.
Yeah, most of the brackets were just right. Then a lot of these are time taken by the...
I think, I think that would be great. I think, you know, ready area for paddle boards.
Has there been any comments from the Business Association?
We haven't talked this thing. And this association is going to be involved into the future of the business association. Nation. Because they have a clear, clear event and all these people.
Oh, so like Harvey, you're going.
No, it's, it's probably one of these individuals. There's a whole lot that I might get into.
What kind of...
Makes you feel like you want a joke to make. Yeah. That's the one.
The idea that non residents believe, I mean, any survey...
Just brought, just brought in the plane, but actually I didn't hear that.
I would make two suggestions. One, if we can come up with a way to figure out what the maximum occupancy for so that not only would the time that they think comply would be a factor limiting, who could, you know, how many people, the actual number, but it would also limit that whichever occurred first. This way we're covered one way or the other. We can't, we can't overcome it with the resource we've got. And we give the businesses enough time to make their applications to get a sweet, get a sweet spot, so to speak.
Yeah, that goes along, that goes along with the lives of the days. You're off the beach chair, it's kind of, kind of a deal of ties or they do ask people to want to offer that survey of the beach because of the weather. Well, I mean, I understand why you have a concern. Those days, so my company's never longer. But there's also a need for something like that in vacations.
The other thing, too, is this is the first time we're doing this. So imagine we want to get a sense of what's, what's going to work, what's not going to work.
Yeah, it's kind of funny because it's almost too different, too, too different a scenario. You've got stuff that probably the people on the beach have got on, chairs, umbrellas, paddle boards, kayaks, stuff like that, which you can think of in a survey of the beach versus a retail version. It's kind of a half or a ice cream cone or whatever.
I can tell you that, I've been working with store log letters. We get more business on Monday than we do on Sunday. There's a people leftover crowd that sort of wanders in the town. I don't know whether they're really busy the weekend and then Monday. It seems like Monday's their last day or, you know, I don't know. But Monday's been a good day, probably closing on Monday.
Just a thought. So two things. My experience with vacations, especially weekly, is that they either start and stop on a Saturday or Sunday, right? So to your point, Monday is a good day. So is our town more of a weekend destination or more of a week destination?
I'd say more of a week. Whatever time we can.
So, Jacob, that's, that's a good point. And that's what I think I was leading to my thought process. I certainly understand this, as you just said, not going from zero to hundred. But it may make it more interesting from a vendor's perspective, you know, to have the seasonality of a week more in the prime time and then a weekend throughout, I guess, the fall, right? Because that would make sense to me as a business person. And the second question is, have we thought for the non parish units or even for food as well, what if one individual, say, we have fifteen spaces, what if one individual came and bought all fifteen business licenses? Did caps and shirts and ice cream cones and snow cones? Do we have an issue with that?
I don't know that. I'll take the treasure on it.
I mean, is that, is that an adequate question? Do we should we care?
It's possible.
Well, that would fall under, see, that would fall under business license. But I think we, we can almost have, let's say we have an intentional, we say that. I mean, you can have a business license that covers all that.
Well, I mean, if that, if that individual had to buy an individual business license for each one of the parks, that is what it is.
The way, the way the business license structure is set up is they could fall under one, retail, which you have. The fashion shop, restaurants, all the, all the retail stores, all under the same cap, retail.
Understanding that, but if that individual had four, that's got storefronts to this one, right? That individual then have to have four business licenses.
If it's all the same company now.
Well, then aren't we...
They're under the same umbrella. The license, if the license, if a boardwalk had four storefronts as one, one company, then...
No, that's it. They would not have to have an individual business license for each one of those businesses.
Yeah, it falls under the same company now.
So, so then, what is to prevent a person from going down there and applying for every, every one of the spaces?
That's a beauty.
You can put a little...
I think that's a real possibility.
Yeah. If one person wants to buy them all, that's fine, but they're going to have eyes and they pay individual price for each one. If I'm getting this right, Larry's going to...
Send it back to the farmer.
Yeah, like zone should be so many square feet.
Does the farmer's market rent individually those spaces? Are there more than one space that is owned by the same, in this case, model?
Yeah, some of it, some of it are high more things.
Higher.
One per.
Because I think, I think if, if I were a business person, you'd go into this, oh, I'd buy it.
Right. I'd say, hey, it's farmer's market, none of it is just because of that specific thing. So they can have multiple different types of businesses.
Right.
And then they only left certain amount of certain types in there. It's kind of funny.
I think it's an after work, so like, business.
It's an honest business running market.
So Larry, maybe you ought to talk to somebody for me, how they're set up.
I think it's a parrot idea.
They're, they're the day.
Yeah, because they limited it very specifically to only have so many different types of businesses. So that, you know, everybody would fair enough, I mean, there's quite honestly, it's like, oh, there's something.
I mean, I think if you get, if you soft with people that hear about this, it's going to be, everybody's got, you know, they're going to have a car for hats, a car for shirts, a car for shorts. I think.
They're selling internet service down.
Other?
It's like Sundance over Virginia Beach. Yes.
But I mean, there's, there's, I think, um, financial upside to that.
What I see down there is, I see more people looking to quit something because they're on market attack. Quite honestly, you can't go to the town and get six back to it.
Well, there aren't a stores.
Yeah, there aren't a stores, so.
But I think what happens is if you get six people that do it this year with ten spaces, you get one person that has all ten spaces attached.
Yeah, I think, well, let's see if you can set it up.
Yeah, I'm just saying.
Unless you have ten different businesses, ten different businesses.
I've never seen one business under, under the same license on all these spaces. That's interesting. That's interesting. I see one, one LLC have multiple businesses, but each, each business has a hack of a license.
Yeah, but they have, most of the LLCs are parent company, that's something.
I understand.
This would be one company that's a five year license. Because you're operating as one, even though you've got a five year license.
Are they all the same name?
Yeah, I mean, this is hypothetical, it's still the same name.
All the same company, store name?
Correct.
It wouldn't be XYZ and P D Q.
No, that's, no, no, no.
That's one.
Now, I'm talking about like storefront, seven, that's capitalized, owner name, and all sorts of products.
This is very aggressive.
Right.
I understand.
So you're, you're going to rework this hiring to back those examples?
Is there still any opportunity for the season?
I, I can't deny it. I started a, a public hearing, I stood in town council, but I can't make, and it's September, can't begin in September, so.
But it could be lower class for next month.
Okay.
Yeah. Hopefully, well, I can afford in town, either, just where there's, at least January, February, March, December, February, I don't know, but time comes for that, the business licenses, um, to get the work out.
Larry, do you, any of those surveys we worked for, have much responses?
No.
So.
Might tell us.
Less?
Less.
Two?
I think the one that we got the most response is for footage of, or that is, and I, I don't, I don't think we got already.
Oh, yes.
It's a, it's a, it's a. No, it's more on getting that, is, you know, if you put it out there, you know, see what people feel, I think people, I think it's a gentleman. It's a service that's, um, services right now, we're, we're hitting on, trying to beat that program down, and while TikTok people, it could take so long to teach people. It's an issue, I mean, seriously, it's an issue that's.
Even the people that are there?
Yeah, well, that, it, it hurts tourism, that's why I was kind of chuckling with this on the town council, having the hearing, I mean, the board about candidates, some of asked, what are you going to do about tourists? I said, we got to deal with what we've got. That's the biggest problem we're facing, that is, marketing, is this will suffice to help out somewhat. Sort of decides to have some sort of like sandwich or girlfriend. Um, that's how I'm envisioning. I don't see too much retail going on there. You will, but I don't think that pays anything like that. I think we're going to be more, we perhaps something, right, you know, correctly going to sit down in a restaurant, get some food.
I used the beach.
I just, that's how I see it.
I used the beach a couple of weeks ago. My niece is in Africa, it was the first time I used it. It really would have been nice to run out and drive me home with these chairs and all, go right to the airport. Biggest problem was, we didn't take enough liquid, the kids wanted to stay. It would have been nice to walk up and get a couple of snow cones or something, real fast.
That's, that's why I see happening, because there's only a number of kids there, not having all the stuff. Say they're running in, in the town, they're all over the back of the house, with, 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 set up, trying to cool and some waters.
I see a lot of dogs.
Yeah, maybe there's, there's kids forever that have a hot dog, hot dog stand, so is that, so.
They're ready.
Yeah. Now that they're, they're bleeding.
Pardon?
So now we have to build a baby one to do that. But, I mean, that's, that's the big thing I see.
I think it's a, I think it's a one reason.
You do, you like, you do have to cover, or tail, or.
I mean, you do make a good point about the rental ideas, the, the kayaks and the beach and road trip. I mean, the end of the day looks like the beginning of the day. You can't, in a sense, you don't even know that that's happened. But some of these other things, it won't be true, you know, you could, you can imagine what concerts and parks look like, happen there, it's been, sometimes it takes up to a day to clean up the litter and all like that, from, from this sort of experience.
Well, the biggest problem is, some of that beach is really shit and crowded. How the worst can keep up with that?
But as long as the, the litter level stays minimal, people will police themselves, but it'll get to a point that, after which they won't care, and then, then suddenly it'll really just go out of control.
Well, I don't think, I don't, I hope I think there's more of the town to address that.
Hmm, well, it's likely to live in the bud, but it can get beyond control for you to know.
Okay, any other discuss, any others comments on that draft text amendment?
Um, before we move on to new businesses, did Chairman do I understand correctly, Thursday through Sunday is not acceptable, Mr. Michigan, rather?
So, I think if we're asking that, to put up money for a license, I don't think we can restrict it to the round days.
I just say, this is, I would see.
I think I would make.
I think, no, that's all the people, um, from business on there. But the grant can't take their kids then, right?
Right.
Well, if the grant can't take their grandkids down the beach on a Monday or Tuesday, then there's no work for them to get something. If this works, if it's off, it's a deposit or something. I mean, if they're trying to rent kayaks and they're, there's nothing to do here. They have an option to do something.
I think it'd be perfectly clear, that might be a good idea to discuss those parameters, meaning that they have to be there again. They're going to have a permit, it's a seven day permit. If you're setting hours of, um, noon to six, it's probably, in my opinion, not asking too much for them to be there between noon and six. Uh, does anybody else?
Whether.
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, you gotta be very clear.
Yeah, because it's got, it's, it's got to be dependent.
If, if, if.
Oh, repeat.
No, like some of the places on thirteen.
Well, we're like in town.
That's what the farmer market is about.
Yeah, that'd be the, yeah, that's possible.
Yeah, right.
So I, I think that's a, a very legitimate point.
They can't cherry pick what they, what hours they want either.
Again, I'll look at that by way of an absenteeism, where you play this, will I go to the middle word? It's a certain.
And a certain percentage.
Okay. Do we want to control the type of vendor that is there? X number of food, X number of, I don't think X number.
That's, that's, some of that input will come from your, your discussion with the farmer's work people. I'll look at them, yeah. We can ask them how they affect this.
That's not bad, it's a.
Fireworks, firework.
Yeah, right, exactly, my point.
We'd be, it's on fire.
All right, we'll move on to new business. Selection of member to serve on Harvard Review Board. By the way, I'm morally willing to stand down.
Do they need, like?
Maybe three times a year.
A volunteer.
Understand, um, they're scheduled, it's not always, it's, sometimes it's earlier, depends on who's available when, just be aware. You step it down, too.
Yeah. So planning commission has two representatives, you and it was Joan.
Right.
So if you step down, that's going to be two babies.
I want to step down because I can't always attend, that's my challenge. I don't think it's hard, no.
So how am I?
Historically.
Are you a Harvard representative? I want to be a historic district representative. Oh, she wants to be historic representative. Oh, that's, that's historic district representative.
Very special question. Do we have to have two or we can have two?
Have to have two.
She's, she's my second.
Yeah.
Yeah.
She's been denominated from the other board.
Well, but she still had it.
No, you have to have, you have to have the right number of people.
We have, we would have three.
No, she's not, she's not.
She's still on the plank.
She's not, it's, uh, that's a flatterment, she's before. It's still not. I'm sorry. Okay.
I mean, well, we met a lot, we have some a week.
On the same.
Yeah. You can do that application, but that's the only reason here's an application. I mean, prior to this recent meeting, I think you've been, what, yeah, over the past two or three years.
Yes.
That's good. The meetings all about the Harvard. There's been three meetings on the Harvard.
Yes.
And there's some that.
It's not, it's a good approval, it's happening. No, it's hard, it's, that's.
I got two there.
Yes, are you?
Yes, we're going to screen.
Are they as on leave?
It's a little discussion.
Still good? Good, okay. Do we need to vote on this or just?
Um, yeah, just, it would be best to vote and say, those are the two names you better recommend to town council.
Want to make a motion to ban and keep representatives?
Harvard. Harvard Review Board.
Our area review board.
Our area review board.
Planning commission representatives.
So.
On favor? Any votes? Your chairman is Ralph Torso.
My last. I have a question.
Go ahead.
Where do we stand? Where do we stand?
Good question.
That's, that's unacceptable.
Yes.
It's unacceptable. They have, they're talking six months.
After all the work we've done.
This is, this is.
Probably has to pay. Did the tourism.
No, town.
We have the town council.
It has gone to town council?
The tourism zone.
It's still there?
Is there a hotel from that?
They don't?
Well, who has?
Check the minutes. What is the board's meeting for that?
No, with the, they went to council.
He organized the tourism zone.
Where is the tourism?
He does not have the content, he's had the tourism since it's not there.
That's tourism, so where's the content?
So who stands with it?
What's the, our town plan? Oh, it's on our list. That's, that's my.
It's on the list of work sessions for town council.
Correct. But, but my understanding is that this board.
Finished every meeting.
Right, right.
And we.
And we submitted it.
Correct.
Yeah.
This one, one place, one, they took off from the plane and, and I said the council.
So where do you go?
At town council right now, since we don't have any council, we've got the, um, the priority of work sessions, and we're asking them to.
Right.
Give us their priorities. And, um, so we're. So why would we be in that rush? It's, it's, again, it's a lot of work, so.
No, yeah, it's on, it's on the town of my list, I think, so.
And since it's, and since it's been such a while, and with the new council, um, we recommend another joint work session with the town council to get them a refresher, certainly, and, um.
Can we get a lane to help?
Jeez.
Another work session? I don't think we need a lane. Well, it's either that or that the town council have a work session on their own, and they're, do not be there to help answer questions.
But, hang on, hang on, hang on.
We have Joan painting.
Well, Joan has been working this process for how long? She's the most key resources we got in town, yes, so council shouldn't have an issue at all.
There's truth.
Yes, there is, all the ones, we see that, just like, as well.
Yeah, those are, we addressed those.
Right, exactly.
We met with him, met with him twice.
And have something in for me, all those predictions and whatever. So I think it was April, quite a few months, his condition was included in our.
Could somebody, uh, ask?
Some, some.
Get.
That lady's on our list of.
Another issue we have is from March through June, town council did not have any outside work sessions because of his budget. So all other topics got put on hold. And then after June, you have a new council. So they're just now getting back into the swing of going back to the work sessions.
I would, I would also remind.
We will be going to them.
I would also remind on the tourism ordinance, that it's specifically stated that it would be retroactive to the first of this year. And here we have council that's still sitting on it.
Council's not sitting on the tourism.
It's a, it's a.
And Grant has been following up with the attorney.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
No, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Where, where in here did I see the anti-tendering law? Was that, did we film that?
That's not the council, too.
That was not the council.
Go on to the council.
Pardon?
They'll be in the council. Anything else? Any other questions, issues concerned? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So.
Second. On favor? Any votes?